The United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
And all please remain standing for a brief round of applause. Thank you. Vanessa, please go. Roll.
Commissioner Spillbogel here.
Commissioner Vogel?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. I have some little stuffy allergies, not good. We are being live-shoot right now, it's being broadcast out to our YouTube channel for public consumption, also being recorded internally for our purposes, compiling the minutes into that. And if anyone has business before the board, I ask that you come and approach the bench and speak into the microphone there, so we can, our purposes internally. Row officer reports and comments. I'm looking at the audience today. I'm not seeing any row officers or representatives of row officers. Public comments. Do we have any number of the public with us today, which can make public comment? First, we'll contractual. We have no repository properties up for bid. We have no advertising bids or presents. Never seen the bids or presents. We do have two warrant registers from June 9th and June 6th. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take motion to accept and file warrant registers.
It sounds like you have a cold, doesn't seem to help. Just those allergies again.
Yes.
It's the pollen casting through the roof the past couple of weeks.
Possible, just possible.
Is it clarity or anything?
Allergy or daze.
That helped?
Yeah, it helped. Yeah, if I had been that mistake, like you wouldn't believe her on. That's why I said.
I will make that motion to accept those warrant registers.
Second, we have motion secondly for a discussion here in none. Question on motion, all in favor, please. If I'm not saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It's one of the reasons for that base most of my life about avoiding the outdoors. We'll go to approval of the Tuesday, June 7th minutes. And again, I'll get my colleagues and look those over and take a motion to accept and file.
Seven.
Second.
A motion secondly for a discussion here in none. Question on motion, all in favor, please. If anybody's saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have one written communication today. It's from Harbor Mobile Own Village and Terror Sales Incorporated, owned by William Cunningham. And it is for the purpose of informing us of their intent to submit an NPDES permit renewal to the Pennsylvania Department of Homeland Protection. As I always try to note, they are required, they and other companies, and these are required when certain activities take place in Lawrence County, provide notification to the commissioners. And we do not have approval authority over these types of notifications. That authority rests with the regulatory agency, in this case DEP. We're only required to receive notification such activities take place. So at that time, unless there's any questions or comments on that, I'll take a motion to accept and file.
Seven.
Motion secondly for a discussion here in none. Question on motion, all in favor, please. If somebody's saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And I see Vanessa walking down right on time.
Beautiful.
Quitting the tina.
I'll say.
Vanessa, you could have timed that any better?
I'm gonna blame UPS truck.
We're literally just made it to your part on the agenda.
Oh, right. I'm so straight up then. Excuse me. And this is very much. No, that's like walking into the hot seat.
That's it. That is actually right there, exactly what it is.
It was perfect.
Yes.
Um, so we have with us, it's under staff reports, but that's about statute with LC. You LCSS? Is that the official?
LCSS, yes.
Um, but I, I, we received notification the other day from Vanessa that they were sold, that LCSS through their MATP, through their ACTS program, were selected for one of the first state same-day pilot programs for ACTS transportation services. And so we thought it'd be a good idea to bring Vanessa here today. We've got the renewal of MATP later on. But also to discuss one of this same-day pilot program, which again is one of the first in the state. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, and then I'm sure my colleagues will have some questions afterwards.
Tell us all about it, yes.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, as Commissioner Boyd said, we're proud to be one of the seven selected in the Commonwealth to pilot a same-day trip program. So a little background, up until now, July 1st technically, anyone who was enrolled with ACTS under our Senior Citizen Discounted Program, which is age 65 or older, or our Adults with Disabilities Program. And both of those programs, neither are in communities. They're both open to the public. One is age-based and one is disability-based. But up until now, the regulations required, they call us the day prior to the scheduled trips in order to get the discount. So that doesn't sound that bad, but you know, that's not how life works. So as an example, like today, if we have a lady that's, you know, 68 years old and we're taking her to her doctor and back home, and her doctor gives her a prescription that she didn't expect, or she ran out of milk that morning and she wants to make that extra stop off to pick up some groceries, we would be required to say, yes ma'am, we can add on that trip, but you're gonna have to pay that full fare yourself, which could be thirteen dollars and 25 cents or more, which of course is cost prohibitive. So under this pilot, so long as we have a driver vehicle available, we'd say sure. We'll make that extra stop and, you know, they'll pay what they're accustomed to, a dollar or two, you know, based on the length of the trip. So we're excited to get going with this program. We're in the process of writing our plan back to PennDOT just for approval. And then we plan on getting the word out, and today we're getting the word out.
Yes.
And July 1st, starting that additional service. Should be good things.
That's phenomenal. I mean, that ties right into what we're trying to do with our transportation systems across the county in terms of making them more flexible, more agile, more responsive to the needs of our residents. And so, you know, I'm sure that our seniors out there and our everyday residents are gonna appreciate the options to have same-day service. It's amazing the Commonwealth hasn't moved towards that, you know, earlier.
I would think that that would be a given, that it could be done, but unfortunately, no.
Questions or comments?
I would just comment that that, once again, it's just an example of a well-run program. Thank you for the work that you all do. I know it's a group effort. I've been in that command center where they put those routes together and have those stops and it's a well-oiled machine, but most definitely, when you have something like that happen, that's a prime example of what to say, that if somebody does get a prescription, or if it does get called in, how are they going to get it? You know, and if it's something they need to start taking immediately. Or combining it if they get their prescriptions at, you know, Giant Evil or Walmart or somewhere, that they can do that little bit of grocery shopping too. I think it's very commendable that it is finally happening, and you think that it would be something that would have taken place already, but knowing that it is, and it's through ACTS, the transportation coordination that you guys have, I think it's wonderful. And I think it'll just enhance everything that you all have put together so far. So thank you. Thank you for such good work.
Dan, anything from, just one quick question.
Absolutely.
First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm not surprised.
Yeah.
But are you able to clarify, if you know at this point, would your service area be the entire county of Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, so any resident, whether they live in Enin Valley, or the city of Newcastle, or Bolant, be eligible?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that is one thing that PennDOT is looking at as they evaluate the success of our program. They wanna see how agile we are, but they also wanna make sure that we're not offering better service on the same day than we would if they called the day ahead. So that's gonna be our balancing act of, you know, so to answer your question, like Elwood City, we have a vehicle that's down there all day, every day, well, Monday through Friday, let me clarify. So, you know, if someone wants to go Elwood to Elwood, or Elwood to Newcastle, it would need to fit with what we're already doing. But I like to think we do have really good current service in our rural areas, and we're always looking to ask, you know, we get a request for someone who needs to go to work five days a week, and we're not in their area at that specific time, well, that's a new opportunity to be in that area at that specific time, because it's a reliable thing that we can grow on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much, and we'll circle back to you here in a couple of minutes for the MATP.
Great.
Thank you.
Commissioner reports and comments. Up next, we have, we're already here on deck first.
I am. I am on deck first. I would just acknowledge that today is Flag Day. And it's usually a day that we have off, but we will then take Monday off for Juneteenth. There was an exchange that was made to follow our state guidelines, and the courts, I believe, have the Juneteens off as well. And I would note that this evening at 6:30, and Debbie, you're here, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna put you on the spot for the news. I believe it's at 6:30 at Earl Muff Sally Field on the south side, where they're doing the dedication and the raising of the United States Marine Corps flag.
It's at six o'clock.
Six o'clock, thank you. That's one thing I wasn't on shore. Okay.
The Lawrence County band will be there probably about 20 minutes early, and they're going to be playing some music before the flag raising, just so.
Excellent.
Did we want to know? Get an invitation to that?
There were no invitations.
No invitations. It was, okay, it was in the newspaper.
That's probably.
You got an invitation.
It was on the hall, it wasn't for that.
Oh, there, okay.
All right, yeah, okay, very good. Yes, excellent. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What all though, last week, we received notification that Lawrence County was awarded, the county-wide total of $800,000 in fair funding, which is a program run through Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency. It's funded through Marcellus dollars, which they come back to the counties to help out with affordable housing, light remediation, demolitions. $800,000 came back to the county as a whole. $300,000 of those dollars were awarded directly to Lawrence County Government for light removal in tipping point neighborhoods. $250,000 were awarded to the Redevelopment Authority of Lawrence County to help support the countywide light remediation program. Over the course of the past three years, I think this board has worked to transition the county's redevelopment efforts away from what was formerly more of a scattershot approach to development, whereby a municipality would come in and apply for a demolition on, like the city of Newcastle, for example. Because to be honest, the majority of our demolitions, the city of Newcastle, they might apply for two on the east side, one on the north hill, two on the west side, one on the south side. Where you're really, you're getting down a problem property, but you're really not creating neighborhood scale impact. This board is transitioning our redevelopment efforts to more of a targeted approach for redevelopment, it's what we're doing in Union Township. It's what we started conversations on in Elwood City. We've had some very, very preliminary conversations relating to some other potential projects coming down the pipeline. But this $300,000 that was awarded specifically to Lawrence County will be used, again, more in a target fashion, towards neighborhoods which are on the fence of whether or not they fall into light and fall into disrepair, or if we're able to intervene as county government in partnership with the municipal governments, maybe we can transform those neighborhoods and turn those neighborhoods around. That's certainly the goal in Union. And while I'd argue that Elwood's commercial district isn't exactly a tipping point neighborhood, again, it's the idea that if we target our reinvestment dollars towards a specific corridor, a specific area, the impact of those dollars is going to be much more amplified than otherwise. The $250,000 to the Redevelopment Authority of Lawrence County, supporting the countywide light remediation program, that's a program run out of our Office of Planning through Amy McKenney, who applied for both of these grants. We're always thankful that Amy's able to go out and get as much money as she is. That's a program that's been in existence for a while. That's a program that municipalities, whenever they condemn properties, are able to tap into. They're able to, if their code enforcement, and only when their code enforcement or municipal engineer condemns a building, we're able to go in and either reimburse them for the cost of the demolition, or do the demolition ourselves. And I do wanna note that it's critical that the municipal government initiates that condemnation process. If they don't, we can't reimburse them, we can't take the building down. So, you know, I'll note that. The other thing I'll note with regards to this is Lawrence County, county-wide received $800,000. Beaver County, which is double our size, received $600,000. And so we're certainly thankful that despite our smaller size, we're punching above our belt weight. The other thing I'll note, I thought this was actually really interesting. I couldn't sleep last night, and I was wide awake at about 3:00 AM. And I did what everybody does when they can't sleep at night, I decided to read the Fifth Class County Code. And it's interesting, there's a provision in the Fifth Class County Code that reads, "The Board of County Commissioners may also prescribe fines and penalties not exceeding $1,000 for a violation of a building, housing, property, maintenance, health, fire, or public safety code or ordinance, and for water, air, and noise pollution violations, and not exceeding $600 for a violation of any other county ordinance, which fines and penalties may be collected in suit, brought in the name and accounting, in like manner as debts of like amount may be sued for." What's interesting about that is that potentially, that language potentially enables the county to implement a property maintenance code, which may provide our planning department with some more teeth as they look to remediate some issues and occurrences of light countywide, especially in those neighborhoods which may not have full-time code enforcement, or where full-time code enforcement may not be performing at the rate that they need to. So I'm gonna ask Jason to look into that language, just because I found it very interesting. We ourselves, as a county, may be able to adopt a property maintenance code, and may be able to enforce instances of extremism, right? You know, I don't wanna be the guy that goes around and gives people tickets for people that didn't cut their grass. That should fall in responsibility to the municipality. But in instances of targeted redevelopment efforts, and in instances where there is a significant risk to health and human safety, the county may be able to intervene through that language to, again, help redevelop and rehabilitate some of these neighborhoods. But that's all I have.
Just some light reading.
Just some light reading.
Yes.
Fifth class, stand up. So it's an invigorating read, if no one's ever opened the book.
Interesting, yeah.
Right? Right?
Very great.
Dan, you're on deck.
Thank you. Debbie, the information that Commissioner Boyd just talked about regarding the dollar amounts that were awarded to the county, you should have received a press release from State Representative Lempelin last week.
Don't know. If we did, I didn't get it.
I'll forward it to you. It gives all the details. He, of course, represents currently the Borough of New Wellington, Wellington Township. Now, with reapportionment, that's going to change, but he did send out a press release. I'll forward that to you. And speaking of Marcellus dollars, Commissioner Spillbogel and I are both on the Board of Directors of the State County Commissioners Association. We met last week as a board in Bradford County, Pennsylvania, which is north and east of the city of Williamsport, sits upon the New York border. Bradford County is about three times our size in area. It's the second-largest county in the Commonwealth as far as its area. Now, their population is less than ours. They have about 60,000 people, about 85,000. The interesting thing, the meeting where we had the board meeting, they just built a $16 million public safety building, and they used entirely Marcellus dollars to construct that building, because they were kind of the epicenter of drilling over the last decade. They had a significant amount of Marcellus exploration up there. But the benefit being, the county received funds that enabled them to build a $16 million facility, which was state-of-the-art. It was impressive.
Very much so, very much so.
But the other curious thing that I'm still having a hard time getting my arms around, their public safety director is also their planning director. That would be like Amy McKenney.
Amy just faded. Or Chad.
Like Amy doing her job and Chad's, or Chad doing his job and Amy's job. I don't know how they do that.
I'm kidding.
But that was somewhat curious. But I just thought, you know, and we have benefited from the Marcellus dollars, by what you just referenced here, the dollars that are coming in for rehab, and dollars that we've had in the past that particularly have enabled us to have ongoing maintenance of our recreational facilities in the county, among other things. But it's a $16 million facility, and they didn't spend any property tax dollars to build it. I'm assuming on an ongoing basis, they probably, you know? And it was a nice, nice facility.
Excellent.
Very nice. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the resolution portion of our circus. We have firstly, foremost, the Assessment Office, JR, if you'd be able to approach the bench here. Resolution for discussion possible through an agreement with Slipper Rock University, internship agreement in Lawrence County Assessment Office. This is resolution number?
119.
119. I'm assuming this is in relation to our GIS intern?
Yes, currently the Assessment Office has an intern, thanks to Judge Motta, in regards to summer interns. He has graciously left his contingency fund to bring on a summer intern. This is something we've done in the past with previous boards of commissioners, where we've contracted with local universities to bring in a major, specific individual to come and try to learn the trade before he or she leaves the college atmosphere. It is a good learning experience for some of these students, because when they are in these classes, most of the data that is already given to them, or when they come here, they are actually developing the data. They're starting from scratch rather than starting halfway. So we have an individual from Slipper Rock University that is working on the GIS platform in the Assessment Office, along with 911 Planning and the actual city of Newcastle, right now, so their data, in upgrading our GIS. So basically, that's what we are envisioning here, is as long as something like COVID doesn't happen again, to continue hiring in the summer, an intern for the GIS. The individual gets job or credit for classwork, I think anywhere between one of three credits, that's up to the individual. And then they also get paid from the judge's contingency. It's a win-win for both the county and the university, because we are getting jobs done for county work, but they are also learning the trade once they get into real life.
Absolutely, yeah, the cultivation of young talent in our area certainly needs those types of programs. Any questions from my colleagues or landowners?
No.
We already have the person selected?
Yes.
And when do they start, family, right?
Yeah, but she already started last week.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve 2022-119.
Seven.
Second, motion secondly for a discussion here in none. Question on the motion, but that's please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillbogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This, I assume, is probably gonna have a little bit of discussion. But we have with us now a proposal to enter into agreement with Kama in Lawrence County Assessment Office. JR, what do we have going on?
All right, so the resolution in front of you is to agree with a company called Vision Government Solutions, and actually formerly EST, Viper Services and Technology. They're one of the same company, Vision acquired EST, but EST is still gonna be working under their name in Pennsylvania, because EST is a Pennsylvania-based, solely Pennsylvania-based firm. The KAMA system stands for Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal. It is a software system in the Assessment Office that does all the valuation and calculations based off of our base year reassessment in 2003. In 2003, just to give a little history, the county did a reassessment with a company formerly known as Manitron Sabre. Manitron Sabre no longer is in business, so we've been using their archaic software system without any support. And that is what I'm coming to you today, because we have no support that software program runs only on older versions of Windows operating systems. And unfortunately, we only have one PC within the county that is running on that. And I fear that someday, that computer is not gonna wake up in the morning, and then we're not gonna be able to value some properties. So the reason for the upgrade is Vision has had experience throughout the United States in converting older Sabre-Manitron platform softwares. They would be able to take the data from the Sabre-Manitron and convert it into today. The issue we run into in Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania uses a base year reassessment software. So we can't use today's market values. We have to use the data that was created back in 2003. So we have tables from 2003 that would be converted and recreated by Vision in order to keep assessing properties uniformly from our base year. That's why it's kind of unique. Pennsylvania has a very unique assessment system, unlike many other jurisdictions throughout the United States, where, for instance, Florida reassesses every year. Ohio reassesses every six years, but in the middle three years, they do a statistical update. Pennsylvania has no reassessment typical or anything, so we have to stay with what our data was at the time of our reassessment. So that's why it's important to convert that data. We've gotta make sure that what we reassessed in 2003 would be the same we reassessed today.
So would you be, I mean, there was an incident, to my knowledge, a couple of weeks ago that involved this system. Would you be able to give an overview of what happened with power outage? And had the system not come back online, what that would have resulted in?
Yeah, probably about a month ago, there was a, I think, one of the trees around, or one of the telecables around the courthouse got hit by a vehicle, and we lost power here at the courthouse. That computer that operates the archaic KAMA system went down. And when I came in in the morning, I had a very hard time booting it back up. I actually had to bring it down to IT, and they had to perform some resuscitations and CPR to the computer to get it up and running again. Luckily, it was able to get up and running, but this is the only computer in the governance center that is still operating Windows 2000. And that's the only thing this software will work on. And again, like I said, my fear is another power outage or something happens and this computer doesn't boot up, and I don't have the ability to value commercial and industrial properties, because that's the only software in the county.
And if you don't have the ability to value commercial or industrial properties, what would that lead us to have to do?
County-wide reassessment.
So just to be absolutely clear, we're entering into this contract
To avoid.
To avoid a county-wide reassessment. This will allow us to bring our systems up to date, it'll provide us with system redundancies, and allow us to continue accessing our commercial and industrial valuations. And if we don't do this, and that system goes down, we will have to implement a county-wide reassessment. So I'll note that the contract price for this is $651,900. Or also note that we received a second bid for this upgrade. And while the initial base price was less, the ongoing maintenance cost was much, much more. And so that leads us to contract with Vision and EST. It's a professional service that's been vetted by our county solicitor. I'll also note that this is being paid for through COVID-19 dollars. It's an eligible expense based on the recommendations provided by our Office of Planning and by our independent auditors, who both concur that we can take the funding for this out of our COVID fund. Questions, comments for my colleagues?
Nope, you answered any question that I had between the two of you, so I feel very confident that this isn't what the.
No questions.
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment. I do wanna mention that the software is above, way above where we are now. There are features of the software that if when the county ever does do a, what do you, reassessment, we are more in line and more ready to do it. We have integration into statistical softwares, we have integration into GIS platforms, where our current software, and even the previous software, did not have that ability. So this brings us up into the 21st century, where some of our older software was still back in the 1990s.
When it was 2000, I mean, is 2020, is that 20th century or 21st century? Because it might literally be bringing us into the 21st century. All right, I'll take a motion to approve 120.
Seven.
Second, we have motion secondly for a discussion. Here in none, that's please call the roll.
Commissioner Spillbogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We received our second tran, so you can begin processing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 2022-121. Vanessa, we're gonna turn the program back over to you for our annual MATP review. All right, I feel like I know what we have going on here today, but what are we doing?
So I am here today on behalf of Lawrence County Social Services, asking for your consideration to enter into a vendor services agreement with us so that we can operate the Medical Assistance Transportation Program on behalf of the county. The application for funding is going to the Department of Human Services in the spring, and the county has signed an agreement. Our annual allocation is just north of 1.6 million. Now, just like every year with the Medical Systems Transportation Program, those dollars come into the county, but if the services aren't offered, they're not given to Lawrence County Social Services. We will provide medical assistance compensable transportation to eligible Lawrence County residents, and we will bill the county, if approved, at 22. and we will bill the county, if approved, twenty-two dollars and four cents per trip. This current fiscal year, it was twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. So it's gone up a couple of percentage points there. But everything just costs more, person fuel and just everything costs more now. So it would be a one-year agreement to be effective July first through June thirtieth. And we're also, I guess the only other thing I'd like to add, unless of course you all would like me to go on, we have seen a tremendous growth in this program this fiscal year. We actually, the county actually will go back in and ask for additional allocation. So we are expecting to continue to evolve and include more services as people need them.
That's great. Also, also note in mind with that, AXA has been one of our project partners in relation to the ongoing transportation development plan coming out of Newcastle Transit. I'm speaking, was a board member of Newcastle Transit, but I am a county commissioner of that statement, but you guys are certainly fellow partners when it comes to service, I think, the transportation needs of the county. Questions, comments from my colleagues? All right, looking forward to a very successful year, I'll call you on motion.
Send it.
Second, motion second, is there any further discussion, hearing none, question on motion, that's please call the roll?
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Realize after I said that, you could have technically called the roll.
Congratulations on that.
Well, it's always good to see you, but that's lovely. And again, looking forward to a successful year of MATP.
Absolutely.
And best of luck on your, your, is pendot inspection next week for the facility?
Twenty-first, yes, next Tuesday they're coming around, so.
Best of luck on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Belisha and Mike Tag team.
I'm gonna take it first, you want to start?
There you go, come on, thanks.
And this will be one for you. What do we got going on?
We have a request for renewal for a contract with Jefferson County Secure Detention located in Ohio, in Steubenville. This is again a renewal, prices have gone up unfortunately, but we are also in the secure detention crisis, if you will, across the state and hasn't, has it not hit here in Lawrence County? So any type of contract we can go into and enter into for secure detention beds, we certainly want to be able to have that available to us. We think we talked about this last time, the, I want to say the closest, but the secure detention facility that we had used the most was up in Erie. However, they're only taking Erie County residents. We also have a couple others that are only taking their residents. So we've actually gone outside the state and had to look for whatever's available and I'm still actually attempting the contract with additional facilities that I can find that are willing to go and accept Pennsylvania kids. So I have some phone calls into some other facilities and so you may be seeing me again in the future requesting secure detention contracts. We are, like I said, in a crisis, Schuman has shut down in Pittsburgh, which required Allegheny County to start looking elsewhere. And because they are, have lots, lots of beds that are needed, they are kind of selling out everything. So right now, we're lucky that we can even find again. We have a kid that should probably be in a secured detention facility right now who's sitting in a shelter care. Just because I don't have a bed availability anywhere. We had a juvenile that, actually it was the same juvenile that we were actually, at one point, almost gonna be using Center County, which would have a three-hour, three and a half hour ride. But the problem with that was is if you get the child there and they say no, because they are private facility and they can do so, then that's a three-hour wasted trip out there. So like I said, for right now, he's sitting in a shelter. But obviously you can have risks, probably putting a juvenile that needs that level of care in a shelter facility with other juveniles, potentially even dependent juveniles. I called yesterday, there's not a bed available. Pretty much what I've been told is to call every couple of days. And that's, I mean, they're getting, flooding with all the other counties as well, making those same calls to find, to find out if there's any bed availability. So I implore us to get this contract in place, although like I said, we're still, we're currently working with them. But the problem is I'm gonna continue to look for other facilities that possibly house these types of juveniles. Fingers crossed, George Junior is going to be opening a facility of this nature. But again, there will be, doesn't necessarily mean that we have access to that, but obviously we would be adding that to our continuum with George Junior whenever that contract becomes available, if that service is up and running, so.
I have two things.
Sure.
Here are one of which actually really relate to the service. The kid can say no?
It's not, no, the facility.
Oh, you just show up and the kid just.
No.
The kid's got the choice. The kids will all reuse their private facilities. The only place that kids say no in the state of Pennsylvania are the youth development centers. However, I will tell you right now, they are operating at about like a hundred and ten percent capacity. And so we've even been on waiting lists for those. Speaking of that juvenile that I was just referring to, I believe last we checked, he was seven bits on our waiting list. So what do we do with the juvenile in the interim of even trying to get them into a state facility? Where I would normally how when I secure detention, waiting for that bed to become available, I don't have that often, you know what I mean? So we are at a big crisis when we have that type of kid and we have violent kids, when we have kids that have been kicked out of, you know, other facilities. It's, it's not pretty for some day.
Thank you for clarifying, I was very, very confused.
Sorry.
The second thing I'll say is I completely understand why Dan, every once in a while, will have us, have us have PA or OH to these things. When I saw Jefferson County, first thing I thought of was, yeah, was that he said Steubenville. I'm thinking to myself, what the hell is Jefferson County doing operating facility in Steubenville, Ohio?
Yeah, yeah.
And realized that it was Jefferson County, Ohio.
Yes. There's another one not too far from there that I'm hoping to get in contract with. They're just in the process of doing two other Pennsylvania counties and they kind of want to see how that goes and then, then they'll kind of reach back out to me. But even so, that's still gonna be at least an hour and a half to our potential ride and they don't transport, which means we do. So we have to bring a kid here for a fifteen-minute court hearing. We take two officers, drive down, have our hearings, drive them back, it's, it could be an all-day, all-day trip.
Well, thankfully we're upgrading our IT systems to where the hope is we'll be able to do this virtually.
Some, not that they don't have the capabilities of doing that, some require they want to see their client in person. So that's certainly their right to do so, through the public defender's office or an attorney's request. So yes, we will attempt to do this if we can, but not always able to do so.
Problem with this question. Questions, comments from my colleagues?
I just know that it is a hot topic with the Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania that it's currently on the list serve right now. That is the question going through the Commissioners Association. Where do you house? Who do you use? And everybody is pretty quick to say, we have a facility we use, but they don't name their facility. They don't want to give up the locations of things, but you're absolutely right. It is a hot topic right now because there are not, the places are not available, so.
I recorded from Channel eleven, just actually the story on us out of Pittsburgh, talking about the closure and I know they interviewed the police chief in Pittsburgh and the, you know, it's, it's the, like I said, not just a Lawrence County problem, it's an statewide one.
Created a huge issue, definitely. Yes. We know that you're doing your best to get the facilities that are as close and convenient as possible. So thank you much for that.
I just want to get some more.
Yes, right. That's it for me.
Thank you. You know, what you've shared with us, I think reinforces the questioning of the Commonwealth's decision many years ago to close the Youth Development Center in Shenango Township. Knowing what we know today, I think that was a very short-sighted and incorrect decision. Now, what's happening out there is a good thing.
Absolutely.
What LCAP's doing with that facility. But I think your problem would be less severe today if that facility was still up and running. I assume I'm right.
I believe it absolutely would play a factor, like I think there's just so many factors that go into it on the state level. I know we had the, the governor had the juvenile task force that we were discussing and so a lot of things have come out of that and not everything has, you know, like they identify a problem, but the solutions haven't kind of trickled down yet, let's say. But I, there's a statewide problem all, you know, COVID had a big play. We have a lot of facilities that aren't able to operate their programs at their normal capacities because of staffing issues. So they had to close beds, which makes all of these placement facilities even more picky, if you will, about which kids then will accept and won't accept. And so they're vetting these kids like crazy and, you know, only want to accept what they want. And so that therefore leaves the whole issue of, well, we're, you know, and so we're having to reach out further. And so it's, I want to say there's a whole trickle-down, you know, effect across so many different things at the moment right now. But yeah, there's, and I think the, even to put a kid at YDC, their premium's like six hundred and some dollars a day. So it's a, even if, even if we get that bed, it's still gonna cost.
It's almost got a lot of supply and demand, isn't it? Demand is high, the supply isn't there, cost will grow up.
And they want to get rid of concrete care.
Yeah.
And we're all of the, I don't know how you can possibly do that type of thing, but that was one of the things that was kind of coming out of.
I think if the state had realized this and maybe utilized a little more foresight, we would still have a facility here in the county that would have alleviated part of this problem. That's just an opinion.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's also one of the problems of having both a state and federal legislature comprised of individuals who are not subject matter experts, who don't listen to subject matter experts.
Yes.
On that note, we'll take a resolution to approve one-twenty-two.
I will take that motion.
Second, motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question motion, that's please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Mike for a contract with family care for children and youth.
Thank you.
Summer for you need?
Yeah, summer, and what do you think for that?
Here's my trivia about Milton, Pennsylvania.
Okay.
Pennsylvania is out in North Oberlin County, the central part of the state, right along the Susquehanna River. You know what they used to make out there? Remember Chef Boyardee?
Yes.
They had a, and maybe they still do, but they used to make Chef Boyardee as canned spaghetti.
I live on it, of course.
Oh, okay. They had a facility there. I don't know if they still do or not, but there's, there's your trivia for the day.
Right.
Well, good.
They can sleep better than I'm telling them.
I'm gonna revisit my college years. Actually, for the one factor that we're revising all those kids. Uh, Mike, where are we?
So we currently, right now, have a child in Southwood Hospital that they could be released this week. This is a last resort path. Now, in July, he's gonna go to George Junior.
Okay.
So we need temporary, if Southwood agrees to keep him till July, then we won't even have to worry about him. So, and I, they have a facility that I watch the calendar. So this is more of the last resort. If, if it gets released, the child gets released from Southwood, then we have to place there.
So this is, this is a worst-case scenario. In the event that this kid is ejected for back of the litter term from this facility, we've got somewhere to hold him over.
Right, but currently he's not there now.
Yeah. Questions, comments?
No.
Simple. I'll take a motion to approve one-twenty-three.
One, two, three. Send it.
Second, motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question on motion, that's please call the roll.
Commissioner Spielvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, appreciate you sitting through forty-five minutes for ten minutes.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we just have a couple administrative transfers. First, out of the district attorney's office from various contingency Johnson witness fees, contingency not being VA's contingency account, to their travel and training and vehicle expense. This is the natural result of increased travel prices. And so that's, that's what the money's gonna be moved for there when gas shoots up like it is. The travel, training and transportation costs will be more. Up next, we have moving from APO, again, three thousand from contingency travel and training. This is the result, they increased costs related to travel. And lastly, to a couple allocations for our mental health and developmental services. I actually didn't do their budget this year, they did their budget this year, so it's not my fault.
See, at the end of the fiscal year for them, as we get to the end of June, so they start the.
They're moving monies around?
Yes.
They, they, yeah, certain services, we saw higher demand for our services, we saw lower demand for. So they're shifting money around to accommodate the specific needs year to year of our community. Questions, comments, favors? All right, I'll take a motion to approve administrative transfers, A through C.
Send it.
Second, motion secondly for discussion, hearing none, question motion, on favor, please go ahead and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now, words, excuse me, on the table, four introductions for final action. Next commissioners' meeting will be held on Tuesday, June twenty-first, at ten AM in the commissioners' meeting room. Next prison board meeting is canceled, so it's no longer relevant. And we are closed on Monday, June twentieth, observance of either Juneteenth or Freedom Day, depending on what you call it. Which again, we shifted over now from Flag Day. We worked so damn hard to get the Flag Day holiday out of our employee contracts. And I think three days after we successfully got out of the teachers' contract, the federal government approved Juneteenth as a holiday. And so it, you know, that, that specific, it never didn't really work out. Plus, we're at where we're at and employees will get the twentieth off. And our operations, with the exception of the jail, one will be shuttered on the twentieth. Public comments? Anything additional for the GUBR? All right, I will adjourn to work with commissioners.